The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilmember DeGord?
Here.
Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Teelander?
Here.
And Mayor Altough?
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'd second the motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes from the July 5th regular meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 5th regular meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mayor Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGord?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
And approval of the July 12th special meeting?
I'd make a motion that we approve those minutes. I'll second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember DeGord?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Altough?
Yes. And on the accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
I'll second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGord?
Yes.
And citizens discussion for items not on the agenda.
Good evening. If I may, give you one of these before I introduce myself. My name is, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Lynn Mason. I'm a candidate for state representative here in the 86th district. And I thought it was fair enough that I would come and let you put a face to a name. Maybe you've seen signs or read things. And so I wanted to come and tell you just briefly a little bit about me. I'm from Baldine, lifelong resident of Baldine. Grew up there, raised my family there. I'm a retired teacher, former four-term Miami County Commissioner. And my husband and I farm approximately 43 acres of apples. As a commissioner, I served on everything from, and I believe you have something on your agenda from the Fred Meyer River Valley. I chaired the Authority Board, which dealt with Meyer Endowment to help maintain the entire length of that trail. And I served on Substance Use Disorder, Planning Commissions, and numerous other committees. I currently serve on MSU Extension State Council. So I wanted you to be able to see who I am, have the opportunity to look up my website, and hopefully you'll like what you see.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time.
My name's Rick Raymer. I own Performs. It's attached to the lead low light power facility. And attended a meeting of the Low Light Power Board on last Wednesday, the 13th. Quite a large number of community attended the meeting and voiced their concerns about the odor that's coming from the facility. At that meeting, Mr. Northrup, I think he's here, said that they were working on some solutions and, I've had several conversations with Greg over the couple of years that they've been operating. And it's not the first time that there's been odors coming from the facility. Overhead doors at both ends of the building have been left open. There's vents in the east side of the wall of the building that have been open. I've asked Mr. Northrup to close the vents on the east side of the building. And my understanding was from the meeting now last Wednesday, that was going to be done last week. Maybe I misunderstood, but that vent's still open. I don't, yeah, photos of the, so I, today took some photos. That's a few pages through them. One more, I think there's four photos. So on the east wall of the building, there's four vents along the top of the wall. This is the second one from the south intersection of my building. And that vent's still wide open. It would take a piece of plywood to close it off. Not high technology. I've been assured that there are operating rules that say that the, all the doors should be, should remain closed. One of the photos there is, if you go to, oh, let's stop here, I guess. So right adjacent to that vent that I showed you is a door. It's obviously open. That door is boarded up with some plywood. But there's a four to six inch vent that comes out at floor level into a trailer. That, it's a minor thing, the hole that's cut for that. That pipe is square instead of round to fit the shape of the hose. But it's another place for odors to escape. If you go to the next slide, next. So here's the northeast corner of the building. There's a man door right, it's kind of hard to see, but right on the rear end of that white car, this part there, that door's propped open. Again, I don't, I don't see the, there's things that Mr. Northrup says that they're doing on the inside of the building, carbon filters, putting a cap over the container that the fog, the fats, oils, greases are pumped into. And I'm, so those are going to take time, which I'm insupportive of the facility. But it's disappointing to me that the just really minor things that could be done to at least keep the smell inside of that building would be done. This morning, you know, walk up the sidewalk, it stinks. I walk out the backside of the building, it stinks. We've got an air makeup unit that's right on the west end of the building that, it's summertime, it's hot. Our plant space isn't air conditioned. It's hot in the building. So the best thing that we can do for our employees is to move air, bring in fresh air, keep it moving. It stinks inside of our plant. We've lost a couple of employees because they're tired of the smell. It's hard enough getting people today to lose good people because the place that they work stinks worse than the car. It's difficult. I would, I know that the Low Light Power, the board is putting pressure on Mr. Northrup. It's becoming a nuisance. It is a nuisance. It's not fair to the neighbors to smell it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Northrup. I'm a managing member, partner of Low Energy AD LLC. Here tonight, one, to apologize to the community for odor issues that we've caused as a result of our facility. It wasn't our intention to do that. We've been working on processes to improve odor control as part of our commitment to this community and for our project. I apologize to Rick again that we weren't more prompt or diligent in the vent issue. I walked the facility on Saturday on the inside and I thought all the vents had been blocked off. So I asked people to reconfirm whether or not the vents that he showed me are blocked off. If not, they will be tomorrow. At the door that was open, I, we have to have ingress and egress at some points in time, so I'll check to make sure that they don't keep the door propped open for longer than what's necessary to get in and out of the facility. And we do open the doors of the facility as vehicles come in or out, but the instructions are to keep the doors closed as part of our commitment to contain the odor. The vent pipe that he referred to is an access point. It's a square opening with a round piece of pipe. And I'll make sure that there's foaming that's inserted around the pipe that will then prevent any air from getting in from that location on the floor. Last Wednesday, we talked about actions that are being taken. And this week, at the end of this week, we will finish the installation of indoor and outdoor odor neutralizing products that should, to the best of my knowledge, based on the engineering review that we've gotten, should take care of the odor issues both inside and outside. The product was ordered on Friday after we reviewed the product information with our technical people. It's to be delivered according to FedEx on Wednesday at 4:00, and we will have it installed later than Thursday, both on the indoors and the outdoors. We've installed, or ordered a second carbon filter to replace inside the building adjacent to what's something called the DT 360. It was one more potential source of odor. And just to be sure that it's not causing us a problem, we ordered a filtering system for that area as well. We've instructed our employees not to open the doors in the event of emergencies. We've purchased piping so that we can vent the exhaust from pumping vehicles from the building to the outside without having to open the doors. Safety requirements, to make sure employees are not exposed to access fumes from vehicles while they're pumping. But we will keep the doors closed as part of that process as well. We're doing tomorrow a full inspection of the three outdoor tanks. In the picture that you were shown, there's three large green tanks, one large one, two small tanks. We're doing physical inspection from the top to the bottom of the tank to make sure there's no air or odors escaping from the tanks. And just to, just to make sure that we're not missing anything in terms of what we could do to prevent this issue. And so I believe, as I have committed to, I will continue to work through Low Light Power and communicate to them what we're doing, when it's been done. If there's an emergency or some event that occurs, we have set up a communication process so that I can let them know what's going on, what actions are being taken. We offer to be in email communication with citizens that would like to know directly what's going on. And I've been assured that the list of email interested participants has been prepared. And I'm sharing the information as we do things with Low Light Power so that they in turn can communicate to those that have an interest in what's happening and the status of the actions that we're taking. If additional work needs to be done, I'm committed to get the additional work done. As I said, I hope these latest actions we're taking that will be concluded at the end of this week, we'll finish this off. Because I know more than you on how odors emanate from our facility. It's not our intent, it's not our desire, it's not part of our performance commitment. So I'm happy to answer your questions that the council may have. I know several council members participated in the meeting, so I won't repeat what I've already said in terms of those kinds of commitments, but I'm happy to answer questions if the council has them.
Do you, with everything that you're doing this week and, well, let's say the next two weeks, how soon will we notice? If we're going to notice, is it going to be, what you're doing going to be immediate? Or, I mean, today, today it was gut-wrenching. I was outdoors most of the day and, and actually I invited the chief over this morning because he hadn't really experienced it. And it, and it is pretty hard for a lot of people. You can walk by the factory on a, in given day and not smell a thing. You go a block away and it's horrific. And that, that's what, that's the smell that we're worried about. You know, and I know that my next door neighbor there, at Preforms, I don't know how his employees could even, even think about working. It's just, I was, I was just out working on my motorhome in my driveway today and had to quit. Actually, I moved it and I thought I might have stirred up the porta body inside it, but it wasn't that. So, but, I mean, is that smell going, I know he had a delivery this morning, you know, but it was constant all day, you know, there was no, even with the doors closed and it was just a constant, you know.
Yeah, I, my belief, my belief is that the actions we're taking will have an immediate effect. I, again, and I'm dependent upon the people that prepare the product, the analysis we've done, but that's, that's the expectation I have.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking this is because I went along with it, you know, from the beginning because I thought we should. And then when you don't experience that smell every day, you think, well, you know, it's not too bad, you can live with it. But basically, the only reason I'm not smelling it is because the wind's changed to a different direction than somebody else is. So that smell has been constant since basically day one. So if it isn't, if you don't, if you don't correct it by at least 95%, it's not going to, you're not, basically it's still going to smell.
Our intention is to get it to 100%.
Okay.
And as I stated, I believe that the actions we're taking this week should resolve your problem. But if it doesn't, then I will be back at it again. This is, this is one of the most important things that I need to worry about. And I can assure you, I've been worried about it every day. I was out to the facility on Saturday to do my own inspection, so. And I will continue to come out to the facility every day till it's fixed.
So the residents in that area on Saturday should be getting some relief, that's what you're telling us?
That's what I believe will be the case.
Okay. Well, I'm sure they'll let us know. Ultimately, it's up to the board of Light and Power, but we do have to protect our residents. I don't know what our, our authority is on this, but I, I hope and pray that you'll be able to get it all under control and everybody can be happy. We love businesses, we want to encourage businesses, and we'd love to keep you around a while if we can make the residents happy and working with you.
And my commitment is we'll be the kind of plants that you want to keep around for a while.
Great.
I'm not satisfied with where we are. And as I say, I'm here tonight, one, because my commitment was to the Low Light Power Board, that's who our formal relationship is with. But I'm here tonight to further express to you my commitment to you as leaders of this community that we're committed to resolve this issue.
Good.
Greg, I just have a question. If we're unable to make a big difference in the odors, at what point will we change the feedstock to get away from the fats, oils, and greases? Is there a timeline on that?
It's one of the things I could consider next week, Greg, as part of the action plan.
Yeah, we just, we have to address this. When we have local businesses losing employees and residents, you know, that close by, it's just, this is something we got to get some quick action on.
Yeah, and we talked about possible further remedies.
Thank you. Thank you for your reference. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Old business? Have you got any updates on the?
Nothing new for you.
Okay. Thank you. New business? Resolution 1216. Robert Brown and friends of the Frederick Meyer Trails.
Robert's here. We have a resolution of support. If you wanted to state anything further.
The resolution that we put before you, a hope of support, is to go along and help us in obtaining some grants that we have coming in the foreseeable future. Some of those grants will include some amenities along the trail that could be coming into hold. And a lot of the grants that we're seeking out right now require walkable communities to be designated within our plan. So this ultimately will walk into our strategic plan and allow us to capture some more funds.
Questions?
Questions? Well, we had a wonderful presentation last time and very insightful. And if I may, I would make a motion that the council approve Resolution 1216.
I'll second.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Mayor Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGord?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
May I ask my word? Thank you.
Thank you.
Stony side.
Yeah, I, I've been in contact with Bob about this. There have been some.
Bob Rogers.
Bob Rogers, correct. There have been some issues with the quote as far as what the ground will be. The original quote we received in the most packed class meeting was for Beverly Woodships and Duncan Rich. Doesn't seem like that's the direction that he wants to take or that we want to take. So he is looking at securing some other quotes with an ADA approved floor. So I'd like to table this until the next meeting. Give him some time to gather up some more quotes and bring it back to us. And we have a lot of parks meeting tomorrow, so we'll be going into a little bit more detail there. So hopefully I can get some more information and bring it back in a couple of weeks.
If that was a motion, I'd second the motion to table it to our next meeting.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Proposal.
Yes, Dixon Engineering provided us with a proposal on contract for the sum of $3,000 to prepare technical specifications for painting the white interior of our 500,000-gallon steel tank at the water treatment plant. And it's just a preventative measure and it will ensure the longevity of that tank.
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to prepare bid specs and plans for the epoxy coating of the water treatment plant tank at a cost of $3,000.
I'll second.
Roll call vote please.
Mayor Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGord?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Teelander?
Yes.
Monthly reports. Any questions or? Board member reports.
Well, they are reported, but their meeting was postponed for the month of July, so there's nothing to report. And my other boards also did not meet.
Well, we got a lot going on with the Stark District Commission Agenda. There's a lot of permit applications. Let's see, we got 204 West Main signage, 211 West Main door replacement, double rear door, 220 West Main painting and window replacement, and then 318 exterior renovations. And some project updates, they had 221, 223 West Main painting and windows, and 219 East Main door replacements. And the next meeting will be July 26, 6:00 p.m. downstairs.
Low Light Power had its meeting last Wednesday about 25 local residents attended. TD 13 was there. Ryan Teachworth is progressing on getting wiring underground. I'm very impressed with Ryan. And I'm very, continue to be impressed with the board. And I believe that they have made their voices known in what to do or the process of the smell over at the Body Adjuster Plant. The DDA met last Thursday. Lights are being researched to match the current lights for the place of the South Monroe Parking Lot. I guess the dumpster's in place. The Chamber asked for funds to paint the Chamber Building so that Impact Church could do the physical work. And August 4th is the next meeting.
I will meet with Parks and Record tomorrow at Creekside Kingdom. Hopefully, next meeting, I'll have an update on the Stony Park renovations, as well as we are doing a tree in memory of Jim Hall. And we're working on a Parks brochure. So that's what's on the agenda for tomorrow. Creekside Kingdom, 6:00, if anybody wants to come down.
I missed my airport board meeting because I went to the Light and Power meeting instead because I thought I should. But I guess their, Impact Church is going to do something for the airport.
We're going to have 40 volunteers come and do some painting and some, helping out with some renovation work at the airport. The airport members are extremely delighted by that. And just shows what this community's all about in terms of providing volunteer help. And so I think everyone's very pleased with what's being proposed.
And Dave, do you have a?
Yeah, I gave a state of the city report on July 6th to the Rotary Club. I usually tried to do that when I was here my prior time. Also, the city manager selection process went well this week. And city staff, Liz Baker, our executive director of the Low Light Chamber of Commerce, and our city clerks, who are to be congratulated for their work. Dick, you can probably provide some update as to what's going on with the city manager selection process.
Thank you. Be happy to. I didn't speak with the person who you've conditionally offered the job to, Michael Burns, last Thursday. And he will be coming here. And the mayor and I will be meeting with him this Thursday afternoon, Thursday afternoon at 2:00, to work out the terms of contract with an understanding that there'll be a contract for you to consider at your first meeting in August, which is August the 1st. Mr. Burns has indicated to me that he's required to give 28 days of notice at his current place of employment. He doesn't want to do that until he has an approved contract, which is, I think, understandable. So I think we're looking at probably the 1st of September, January 1st.
I might mention that my daughter is a deputy city clerk for the city of Davison. And Davison and Fenton are in Genesee County. And she talked to her boss. And she talked to her boss, the city manager, Michael Hart, about Michael Burns, and Michael Hart spoke very highly of him. So that's just another good thing to know.
And Mike, you want to start, council panel?
I do. I was extremely impressed with the turnout at the Meet the Candidates last Monday night, as well as the process on Tuesday. I thought it was fantastic. So thank everybody who came on for that, and I think we made a very good choice. Thank you for letting me go first.
I agree with Mike. The Grand Valute experience was wonderful, and meeting all the candidates. We had three real good candidates and wonderful turnout. And we... I got a lot of input from the citizens, too. I was just so pleased with the attendance, even on that Tuesday. It was a long day. And the council, I thought, was wonderful. We had great discussion. If you missed it, I wish you could have been here. I don't believe it was recorded, but I'm very proud of this council. That's all I have.
Yes, I would like to thank everybody that came on. I thought it was a great, great turnout, and it was a pretty great process. With that being said, I was out and about today and getting my daughter involved. She's 17, she's a senior, and she wants to get back to her community. So, you know, we hit up a couple places, and we stopped down here, and she can do some work here for pitchers with the parks. And I also feel that there's a lot of other students that we could get to help out and bring in. I know there used to be a lot of programs here, Betty was saying. I think we need to bring these kids in here a little bit more and get them acclimated to our community and get them willing to help out because they want to. And that's the people we need to look forward to in our next generation. So anything we can do to get more kids involved, I think, is a great thing. So I'm looking forward to my daughter being around and helping out and being a good example.
I'd just add to my constituents here that the whole city manager process, I thought, went incredibly well. Congratulations. I think Kathy gave us great leadership and helping us through that. Again, thank you for sharing your thoughts Monday night, the 11th, when we had our get-together at the Grand Valute. My wife and I tried to stay out of too much conversation with the candidates at that time, but we were circulating and listening to what you had to say. And I appreciate the input that you gave to us on Monday evening, as well as a couple of calls on Tuesday as we were meeting with the candidates. And I think our process went through quite well, and wonderful conversation, wonderful exchange. And your council here, I think, worked very well together through that particular process. I really feel I need to say that. And I think we picked a terrific candidate and look forward to moving forward with Mike Burns and looking at what our best days are ahead of that, ahead of us. That being said, we did have a good day behind us, that named Riverwalk. And Liz Baker and her staff and volunteers just did another terrific job making our community shine, and so we can feel good about ourselves, as well as other people in the area coming to see what Lowell really is. And the weather, doggone it, she just hits home run after home run. And so congratulations to Liz. And with that, when you leave the building tonight, perhaps you'll notice that the Chamber of Commerce office, that whole building is being painted through some funds made available through the DDA. And the volunteer labor, though, is coming to us free of charge from a little place called Impact Church. And hats off to that group. They're celebrating a week of love, so you can feel it, as they do various projects within our community. And thank you very much to Impact Church for what they're doing to make Lowell a better place this week, as well as the other 51. So this is a great place, a great place to be.
Thank you very much, Jim. The process of hiring a new city manager went extremely well. Got a lot of real good input from the city staff and from the community. So I think everybody's on board with what we're doing, hopefully. There's no sense of going over all the everything that everyone said. The parking lot looks good, the state swept the streets this weekend, town's looking great. And this weekend, I had an experience that a lot of people won't ever get to have, but I got to marry a young couple this weekend, and it was quite fun. And that's all I have for the night.
So I make a motion that we would adjourn at 7:36?
I'll look second.
All in favor?
Yes.